I'd like to call the June 11, 2015 meeting of Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton.
Here.
Mayor Holloman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Here.
Our first order of business today is council minutes from the meetings of May 11th and May 14th, 2015, and the special meeting of May 14th, 2015. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'll take the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll need the approval of the minutes of May 11th, May 14th, and the May 14th special meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next order of business is matters of special privilege, and we have two today. The first is a resolution honoring retiring city manager Jackson C. Tuttle. Jack, would you join me at the podium? As many of you know, Jack is retiring at the end of this month, and the city council has a resolution. I'd like to read that and then give you an opportunity to say. This is a resolution of commendation and appreciation, Jackson C. Tuttle II, on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas after a distinguished career spanning four decades, Jackson, Jack C. Tuttle II, will retire on June 30, 2015, having served the city of Williamsburg as city manager with integrity and excellence for 24 years, having served with 10 city councils since 1991. And whereas Jack's commitment to ethical leadership, innovation, citizen engagement, and transparency has built a strong and effective city government, one operating in full partnership with citizens, businesses, and Williamsburg's exceptional educational institutions, Colonial Williamsburg and the College of William &amp; Mary. And whereas he has been a member of the International City County Management Association for 38 years and an ICMA credentialed manager since 2002, is an active member of the Virginia Local Government Management Association, serving as VLGMA president in 2012. And whereas Jack has earned the reputation, excuse me, the respect of colleagues and residents, receiving many awards and recognitions, including the Prentice Award from William &amp; Mary, the Career Excellence Award from ICMA, and most recently, I believe last night, I've received the Lifetime Achievement Award from VLGMA. And whereas Jack is passionately dedicated to preparing the next generation of local government professionals, teaching as an adjunct professor in the Virginia Tech MPA program, chairing ICMA's Performance Management Advisory Committee, serving on the Board of Directors for the Alliance for Innovation. And whereas Jack is also known to all as a devoted husband and father for his service as a captain in the United States Naval Reserve, as a wise, caring, and dedicated public servant. And whereas Jack was instrumental in obtaining the property where the Civil War redoubts number one and two are located, the Redoubt Park Trail leading to Redoubt Number Two will be named Tuttle Trail in honor of Jack's commitment to preserving the Civil War redoubts. And this is a mock-up of the marker. And our hope is that this is just the beginning of Tuttle Trail, because there are discussions ongoing with Riverside, Quarter Path at Riverside, about whether to extend the trail actually into what's called Blaine Ravine, the major focus of the battle. The potential to extend the trail to the Quarter Path Recreation Center, and ultimately, if Quarter Path Road becomes a walking bike path, that that could also be part of the Tuttle Trail. So this is only the beginning. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Williamsburg, on behalf of all its citizens, does hereby convey its deep appreciation and heartfelt thanks for Jack's tuttle's many years of exceptional public service. We applaud his career as he retires and wish him well as he enters the next stage of his life's journey. This is dated June 11, 2015, and signed by all members of city council. Jack.
That's really, really sweet. I'll tell you, it has been such an honor to serve both the people and the place that is Williamsburg these couple of decades. And my thanks goes first to the city council and to your successors, your predecessors, for allowing me to do this job and supporting me so well in it, and really allowing Susan and I to make this our home. And so we just, from the bottom of our hearts, cannot thank you enough. And to the city staff, I mean, what I'm really going to miss when the time comes is not being daily a part of that group facing whatever the challenges of the day are. They are exceptional is not a strong enough word. They are really my family, and I'm going to miss that greatly. But I also know that the one thing, we are leaving the city of Williamsburg in great hands, that all will be more than well. And so I thank you so much for this and for the honor of it, and looking forward to my last city council meeting. So off we go.
Thank you. The next matter of special privilege is the Williamsburg Business Appreciation Award. This is sponsored by the Williamsburg Economic Development Authority, and the 2015 winner is Chesapeake Bank. Marshall, would you? I'm going to read a little bit, and then you'll have a chance to say a few words. Chesapeake Bank has consistently provided excellent customer service to the Williamsburg community, having ranked in the top 10 percent of community banks for the past seven years, including a ranking of 28 out of 6,000 in 2014. Chesapeake Bank opens its retail location on Lafayette Street in 1998, I believe, and in 2006 moved its IT department, Internet Banking, and Financial Center to an adjacent building. The Financial Center serves as the bank's regional hub for commercial and residential lending. Between the retail location and adjacent Financial Center, Chesapeake Bank employs more than 30 people in the city. It is ranked number 11 in the nation of the best banks to work for by American Banker Magazine. In addition to its banking and financial activities, Chesapeake Bank plays an active role in the community. Employees volunteer or serve on the boards of various organizations in the city, including the United Way of Greater Williamsburg, the Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance, the Williamsburg Health Foundation, Meals on Wheels, and the Quanis Club. During the recent recession, Chesapeake Bank continued to provide financing for local businesses and residential mortgages, demonstrating its ongoing investment in and support of the community. Accepting the award on the behalf of Chesapeake Bank is Marshall Warner, Executive Vice President. Thank you, Marshall, for all that Chesapeake Bank has done and continues to do for the Williamsburg community. Marshall.
That's all my fellow team members here who've stood around the room. Thank you very much. It's quite a privilege to receive this award. Jack said we've been here since 1998, and we have always encouraged all our employees to be involved in civic activities and our profits. And we try to get not just with our checkbook, but more importantly, with our people. And we try to be very involved in everything going on in Williamsburg. Again, we appreciate this award, and we hope to do many more good things for years ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Today we have one. This is PCR 15-010, the request of Glenn Lavender for a special use permit for the Silver Hand Meadery at 224C Monticello Avenue. Ms. Marshall.
Mayor Holloman and members of council. Glenn Lavender is proposing to operate the Silver Hand Meadery at 224C Monticello Avenue, which requires a special use permit in the urban business district B3, since it falls under the microbrewery, micro distillery, winery, and cider category. The applicant proposes to convert Unit C, which is approximately 1,100 square feet, into a meadery with a proposed 450-square-foot future patio area in front of the unit. Uses proposed are manufacturing, retail sales, food and beverage sales, and the display and sale of art. The comp plan notes that this property, along with the land, to the north, south, and east are the same category as designated urban commercial land use, with a small area at the northwest corner designated urban residential. And that's the small area up in here. This property, along with the properties to the north, south, and east, are also urban business district B3 with a small area at the northwest corner, Zone Multi-Family Dwelling District RS2. This small site currently contains a doctor's office, a church office, and an empty space in which the meadery is proposing to locate. No changes are proposed to the site except for the construction of a small patio in the front in the future, and that's that small area up in here. This property is located in the Midtown Parking District and meets all parking requirements. The size of the building is such that the owner is required under the zoning ordinance that limits a micro distillery to 15,000 barrels a year. Initially, the owner expects a production capacity in the range of 70 to 95 barrels a year. The use of a micro meadery at this location is an appropriate use for this property. It will bring another use to the Monticello Avenue, which will help diversify the economy of the urban business district area in this part of the city. Plan and commission held a public hearing on May 20. The applicant and one person spoke at the public hearing, and plan and commission recommends that the special use permit be approved for the meadery, conditioned upon the Architectural Review Board approving any fencing and patio furniture prior to construction. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Lavender, the applicant, is also here. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Carolyn. Come back to council for any questions. I don't believe so. Thank you very much, Carolyn. With that, let me open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak to this matter. If so, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action. Mr. Viceman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a few years ago, when we were considering the changes to the zoning they would allow by special use permit, the concepts of micro distillery, micro brewery, this is exactly the type of use we're looking for, almost exactly, because I don't think I knew about a micro meadery at that point. But it's the type of business that we want to encourage in this area. It's going to add to the vitality of the corridor. It's going to add some evening activity in the area. It's not too close where it all, it could be disturbing to residential, and it's a nice complement to the adjacent arts district. So I'm very much in favor of supporting this.
Go on.
Paul touched on most points, but I was talking about adding reasons for people to visit, or add a day, or even an afternoon on a trip to Williamsburg. Craft beverages are booming, glad this is planted in the city and making a, that'll be a unique use on the Monticello corridor.
I would agree with all that, and I look forward to having another successful business come to town.
I'm just looking forward to the ribbon cutting.
I think, I think we all are. And again, this is, you know, some really innovative thinking about what can take place in the city. So Glenn, we thank you for bringing this to us. With that...
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the city council, approve special use permit as recommended by the plan and commission.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holloman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Again, Glenn, thank you, and thank the staff for the work on this. It's really terrific. Next order of business, reports, the first monthly financial statements. Jack, anything in particular?
Well, we have one month to go in the fiscal year, and next month, Finance Director, I would imagine, will be giving you a report to give you a recap of how we're doing overall on the year, and also estimating what the final position will be with all the approvals in place. But for now, we are in positive territory. Good news is both on broom tax, we moved into positive territory over last year's proceeds. We're 5% up on meal tax for this year, and we're 3.4% up on sales tax. So those are all positive indicators. So I'll be watching on TV next month to see how it comes out. And any questions you have, myself or Mr. Sarah would be happy to address.
Any questions for Jack or Phil?
I just hope his retirement's more exciting than watching this.
I have a feeling you'll find other things. Okay, monthly department operating reports, anything in particular?
Well, just, I'll say one thing only, that every month, the staff collects hundreds of measures, and we send you the raw data each month in these reports. And then it feeds into the performance measurement system, both for the dashboards that are publicly available and all the operational dashboards, as well as the outcome measures that show up in your budget. And so this is an important document, and one I also hope you will continue.
Any questions on operating reports? If not, that brings us to city manager reports, of which we have a number. The first is the supplemental appropriation and transfer for general fund and law enforcement block grant funds. That's proposed Resolution 15-08. Mr. Sarah.
Mr. Sarah.
Mayor Holloman, members of council. During the year, there were certain grants that came in for the general fund, sales tax fund, and the law enforcement block grant fund. These are all grants. There was one private donation, but you have it as detailed in the memo with the sources and uses of all of these grants. And Resolution 15-08 will officially appropriate these funds to the current fiscal year 15 before it ends at the end of this month.
Any questions for Phil?
Just like to make a comment. Mr. Sarah said certain grants came in, and that's true, but they don't come in without good work on the part of staff, seeking them out, applying for them, doing the work that justifies the grant in the first place. And this is a big contribution to this community. It makes a real difference in the services we're able to provide the citizens. So thanks to everybody on staff who was involved in this, and also for the very kind gift that was received in addition to the grants.
Anything else? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that city council approve proposed Resolution 15-08.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holloman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next report is the Waller Mill Park improvements, and this is an award of bid.
Yes, but a call on Robbie Hutton, our deputy parks director, department head, to give you the report.
I'll be welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Holloman and members of city council. Last month, Michael and I came before you to share our story of Waller Mill Park and the park resuscitation efforts through the implementation of CPR, Community Partnerships and Resources. Then we asked for your support in awarding the contract for Waller Mill Park improvements. The dock area improvements and fishing pier construction are in the FY15 capital improvement plan, and they're also listed as an initiative in the city's 2015-2016 GIOs under the Recreation and Culture Goal. All improvements will be ADA compliant and will function in varying water levels. The improvements include replacing the boardwalk and walkway, removing this stationary dock and replacing it with a floating dock, kayak launch, and kayak storage, and will also have an accessible ramp. This dock here is currently our floating dock. It will be resurfaced, and we will also add an accessible ramp. Off here of the point will be the construction of a new fishing pier, which will include lighting and an accessible walkway. And then back over here will be the construction of a new concrete boat launch and timber boarding dock. Last renovations and alterations to the floating and fixed docks occurred in 1996. Factors considered in moving forward with these improvements are age, safety, function, ADA compliance, and programming opportunities. Design and specifications for this project were prepared by AES Consulting Engineers and TAM Consultants. The project was advertised, and three bids were received. The lowest bid was from Carolina Marine Structures Incorporated in the amount of $616,646. After a thorough review of references, Carolina Marine Structures Incorporated is qualified to perform the work. And this slide here is how it will all come together after its... I have with me here this afternoon Michael Van Altenhoe, the Waller Mill Park manager, and Graham Corson from AES to assist with answering any questions that you may have.
Robbie. In fact, thank you very much. Let me turn to council for any questions.
So these, we currently have one floating dock.
Yes.
We'll have a second floating dock. That one is currently stationary.
Right. Well, this one here, this one here is our current floating dock. It'll essentially be pushed out about 20 feet to accommodate an accessible ramp. The one to the left is currently our stationary dock, which will be removed and replaced with a floating dock.
So those will be able to be used no matter the water level?
That's correct.
Doug?
So the intention to do this was out of necessity because of the condition of the current infrastructure, or are we seeing a higher demand?
It's a little bit of both. First and foremost, safety is our number one priority. The park turns 43 next month, and it's in dire need of some repair. So we've also had an influx of use of our park. And with these new amenities, we look to grow our fishing program and branch out to develop kids' fishing programs. So that's with the addition of the new fishing pier, that will allow us to do that. Also, with all of the improvements, everything will be ADA accessible.
The boat ramp really is a major improvement as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that also will include safety lighting. I didn't mention that earlier, but the new boat ramp will provide that as well.
And sufficient parking, you know, everything.
Yes.
Terrific. Well, I want to thank Robbie, you, and Michael for all the work into this. You guys have really taken hold of the park and began to make substantial improvements. So thank you very much for that. I'll come back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the council, authorize the city manager to execute a contract in the amount of $616,646 with Carolina Marine Structures Incorporated for dock replacement, bulkhead, and boardwalk improvements, and boat ramp relocation at Waller Mill Park.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mayor Holloman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next report is on the demolition of the Country Hearth and White Lion Motels, and this is again an award of bid. Dan, welcome.
Mayor, city council. Staff went out for bids for the two motels on Cap Lanning Road, which the city just recently purchased for demolition. That was the Country Hearth and the White Lion. Bids were received on June 1st, and there was a lot of interest, as we have these four bids from these contractors. This is a summary of the little bidder to the high bidder. RJ Smith was the low bidder with the demolition of both properties, $168,350 with the Country Hearth and $135,245 for the White Lion. We've done reference checks on Mr. Smith. He's a contractor. He is very qualified, and he has done a lot of experience with demolition work. The demolition work also includes removal of all the concrete, the asphalt, any light poles, signs. The trees and bushes will be taken on an as-needed basis. If it's in the way of the demolition of the buildings, they'll be taken. Otherwise, they'll stay. And all the disturbed areas will be topsoil and seeded. We anticipate starting construction the first part of July, with completion sometime in the fall. He does plan on recycling as much of the material as he possibly can. Funding will come from a combination of the $200,000 we have in, that's earmarked in FY16, the capital budget, and the remainder of the $103,595 from capital contingency. We did have some late-breaking news. Rich Saunders from the Economic Development Office, Rich, was, came upon a possible grant for this project in the amount of $50,000. So we don't have it yet, but we will qualify for it, just a matter of whether or not we get it. So thanks to Rich for that. So that's all I have. We'll take any questions.
Dan, thank you very much. Any questions?
Just a couple of them. Mr. Clayton, how did these bids come in compared to expectation?
A little bit higher. Of course, we didn't know exactly. We haven't done anything that big on demolition before. And there was some asbestos in the buildings, that age of the buildings, so they're a little bit higher than we thought. We only have, we only have $200,000 put in next year's budget. Now it's more or less placeholder, and so the total is about $303,000, so it's probably a bit more.
Do you have any knowledge of what the comparative breakdown is between actual demolition and removal versus the disposal of the materials?
A lot of it, a lot of the heavier stuff, they are going to recycle. They'll actually get something for that material. But no, I can't tell you what we're talking about there.
Dan.
But the demolition, I know that there's usually, in the recycling of the material, there's some grinding and stuff. Will that happen on-site, or will they haul that off and grind it?
They'll, they have a facility, but they make large stones and whatnot, so they have their own facility on-site.
Okay, so the trash is taken away?
If you're getting to the point about noise, there'll be some noise there, but they're not making, you know, doing all the fine work there would be happening, no sir.
Okay. Chief. Dan, thank you very much. With that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the council, authorize the city manager to execute agreements with RJ Smith Construction for the demolition of both the Country Hearth Motel for $168,350 and the White Lion Motel for $135,245.
Say it.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Holloman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next report is on Cedar Grove Cemetery Fees. This is proposed ordinance 15-13.
Yes, sir. Cedar Grove was purchased by the city back in the 1850s, and the original four acres, and it's been expanded since that time. The fees for Cedar Grove were last adjusted about 17 years ago, so back in 97. So the time has come to look at those again, and if we take a look at the cemetery budget, just the cost of the superintendent at the cemetery and the direct cost there, the budget for that is $67,500 a year. We've took a 10-year average, because obviously the sale of plots goes up and down from year to year, but it's averaged down to $36,000 of income coming back from the sale of the plots. So we know, we've known that we operate the cemetery at a loss, and it's really a benefit to city residents, partially supported by the general fund. The recommendation is that the fees be increased. The single space fee would go from $350 to $600. That's still, as we gave you the schedule, substantially below what both private and public cemeteries around the region charge. So it is still a very attractive benefit to city residents to have the cemetery available. But we believe that it's... And, but we believe that, that it's the right thing to do. The way the ordinance reads now, the, the fees, the fee increase is put into place, and it was actually done on June 1, and then it comes to city council to either ratify and confirm or to change. And so that's the process that's laid out in the ordinance. Any questions you might have, Mr. Clayton or myself would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jerry. So Frouting, any questions, comments?
I have one question. Mr. Tuttle, I understand the idea of the city supplementing the operation or supporting it because it really is an asset to the community. But does that include the sale of the plots themselves as well as the services that are provided on an as-needed basis? Or do those services deliver that cost?
Those services are probably below cost, but what, what you're talking about, there's an additional cost to, to purchase the plot, one-time expense. Once you have it, it stays under your ownership or your family's for generations until the spaces are all used. So that's a one-time cost. When, when you come to the time of, of the space actually being used, then there is a fee for what is essentially for opening the grave, for, for digging the, the grave and providing the service for the actual burial itself. And so the, the stand, the cost for that is a conventional burial on the weekdays, and this is done simply by city crews who just come out and do the digging, will go from $300 to $500. So that is designed to cover that cost.
Okay, thank you.
Scott?
This fee comparison is pretty telling. This is certainly a benefit for folks to live in the city. This is, that's, you can see, most cases were less than half, so I'm not uncomfortable with bumping this up.
Doug? Yeah, nor am I. I think, you know, it's certainly in keeping with, with the tradition of how we've operated the cemetery and as a, as a benefit to city residents, and I think we're still within a comfortable position with this, this fee increase. But, you know, it is a sign of times, you know? Things are becoming more expensive, and so fees, and it kind of reminds me of the water rate, you know? Having to raise the water rate a little bit, hopefully we won't have to do this every year. But I don't have any questions.
Maybe just every 17 years.
That's right. You can only do that with the water.
It's like a cicada.
That's right. And if we open this up more broadly, if we made purchase of these plots available to the broader population, I have no doubt that there would be huge demand, so I, the fees are well within reason.
Great, then I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the council confirming the increase in Cedar Grove Cemetery fees by adopting proposed ordinance 15-13.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
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 Vice Mayor Frouting.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Next report is hotel motel regulation revisions. This is proposed ordinance 15-14.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I believe that the Vice Mayor Frouting and Councilman Pons are principals or employed by businesses that could be affected by this item. They, under the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act, since there are far in excess of three businesses that could be affected, they would not have a conflict of interest if so long as they state for the record what their interest is and that it would not preclude them from acting fairly on the matter.
Great, thank you.
So if they state that for the record, they may discuss and vote.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, I do own a hotel in the city of Waynesburg, but my interest in that will preclude me from making a decision on this in a fair manner.
Mr. Mayor, I work for the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, which wholly owns a subsidiary for-profit operation that runs several hotels in the community, and that will not inhibit or limit my ability to make a fair and balanced decision here.
Great, thank you. Mr. Nester?
Council approved changes to hotel and motel regulations last month by adoption of a new ordinance. That ordinance was, would take effect on July 1 of this year. Prior to the adoption of the ordinance, council directed staff to review several stated concerns and present proposed amendments to the regulation at today's meetings, and I'd like to go through those. One concern was requiring telephone numbers as part of the hotel motel registry. This is not a new regulation that was carried over from the city's existing regulation. Staff feels that this is necessary information in case any visitor needs to be contacted. If a visitor has no telephone number, none would need to be indicated on the registration form. The second issue was allowing families of employees to reside in a hotel motel room or suite when it is allowed for the employee. The regulations proposed continued the existing provision that 5% of the rooms or suites in a hotel motel may be occupied by an employee who works at least 20 hours a week for the hotel motel. And that, those regulations were initially adopted as part of the city zoning ordinance in 2007, eight years ago. They were taken out of the zoning ordinance and placed in the chapter of, this is chapter nine of the city code. So what is in there now represents no change to the regulations that we have had for the past eight years. And as we did eight years ago, there's a provision that a room or suite with kitchen facilities may be occupied by the owner or onsite manager and their family with no maximum length of stay, but the 5% of the rooms, that's employee-only, no spouse or family, would be allowed. Now, we've had, there've been additional discussion about concerns expressed about the cost of adding kitchens to allow families of employees to live in hotel rooms in excess of the 30-day period. I note that the provision of kitchens for a dwelling unit is also a requirement of the city's building code, which is the Uniform Statewide Building Code, and that's apart from the zoning ordinance regulations. But to address these concerns, an alternate proposal has been developed, which I believe you have a copy of, that would continue the existing regulations that we've had for the past eight years for the next year and a half with the new regulations taking effect on January 1 of 2017. This would allow additional time to meet those regulations. The final item was allowing an extended length of stay in emergency situations such as could be, could be a major storm, could be a dormitory fire, something like that. So to address that issue, we're suggesting the following language where an emergency situation requires a provision of temporary housing. City council may authorize occupancy in excess of 30 days. The first 30 days is allowed by rights, so within that 30-day period, there was a need for an extended length of stay. That would give time for council to act on this emergency legislation.
Great. Thank, thank you very much, Reed. Let, let me begin, and I'd really like to, to, to thank Ron Kirkland from the Hotel Motel Association and AJ Patel, who met with me and, and explained a number of issues that came about as a result of, of the change. I also got calls from, from a number of, of others, particularly Parisha Patel, who was very helpful in, in helping me understand the, the issue. And, and as a result of that, what, what we're proposing here is to essentially keep the regulation the same as it is now, so that not to make a change that might adversely affect some, some of the motel owners in, in the community, with the idea that, one, we ultimately want to move towards something like was in, in the proposed ordinance. We're going to delay that until January 1, 2017. And in the meantime, I would like to appoint a group consisting of representatives of the hospitality industry, city staff, and other constituencies to come together and, and look at this issue and come back to us to see if there might be a better way to do this. And, and I would hope that we could do that by the end of this calendar year. So I will take the initiative to put that group together as soon as possible. But that's the, I think there, as I came to understand it, there were unintended consequences of, of this change, and, and we can't have those kinds of unintended consequences without giving people some time to respond to them. And I think this is a proposal that allows that time and also allows us to go back and look at it and think if, are there other alternatives and how we might address that. So that's the thinking behind it. So with that, I'll turn to council for any comments, discussion.
I appreciate the thought and the opportunity to have a continuing dialogue to make sure we get to the best possible outcome. We may not have all the information or know what the right answer is today, but I, I think with your approach, there's no reason to think we won't get there. I'm just curious, and I know we'll get to Mr. Pons, but I just want to know if there's anything else in here that is a concern as well.
Go ahead.
Well, and too, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, as you mentioned, we met with the president of the hotel association and its executive director, and I think what's been proposed here pretty much speaks to the concerns that they had enumerated to us when we got together. This is a positive affirmation that this is a good thing, so I think, moving forward, having the discussion to kind of, you know, wrestle out what some of the issues may be and working towards the optimum solution, not just for the city, but to, the city as a government, but for the residents that live in these, you know, in the community in and around, and also for the hotel owners, so that they can operate successful businesses. And so I think we're heading in the right direction.
Judy?
There is one larger issue that I think we need to keep in mind, and that, it goes, goes well beyond this, this regu, this provision, which I support. But that's the issue of children and families living in motels. And that, that's a problem in this community, not only the city, but the surrounding area, and we need to somehow deal with this problem because it is not appropriate for families with children to live in motels on a long-term basis. It's not good for the children, it's not good for the families, so.
And, and I think that was the driving force behind our, our changes in, in creating a new zoning district to, to create housing that would help address this, but I, I would reinforce that the city of Williamsburg can't do it alone. We are, we are not the only entity in the historic triangle that deals with this problem, and at some point, I'm hoping that, that our, our neighbors will, will engage with this idea as well.
And Ms. Newsom, I think you'd agree that the issue of families living in hotels is a symptom of a larger problem.
Oh, absolutely.
It's not in of itself a, a problem.
Absolutely. It's just that sometimes we get so caught up in the minutia of this kind of thing that we forget there's a, there's a much larger issue out there, which goes well beyond this, this particular issue.
I'll take time to say thanks to the industry and to the association for really coming together and making this a good community dialogue that'll ultimately result in a good product.
Yeah, and, and I think the, the point was made, you know, we want to get this right, so let's, let's take the time to make sure we get it right. Any further discussion? If not, I'll take the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the city council approve proposed ordinance 15-14 as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frouting.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Next order of business is appointment of interim city manager.
Sure. Based on our discussion in closed session and over the last several months, and with Jack's retirement at the end of the month, I'd like to move the city council hereby appoint Jody Miller as interim city manager with the authority to perform all the duties of city manager pursuant to the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the code of the city of Williamsburg beginning on July 1, 2015, and continued until such time as a new city manager assumes his or her duties or until further action of the city council with addition, with, with additional compensation for acting temporarily in a higher position of $1,250 per pay period.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
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 Vice Mayor Frouting.
Aye.
Jody, thank you very much for being willing to take this on. We really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
We have one more report. This is a planning report, and this is ARB 15-015, request of Autobell Car Wash to erect signs in the public right-of-way at 336 Second Street. Ms. Murphy?
Mayor Harmon, members of council, as you just stated, Autobell Car Wash is proposing to locate a monument sign down here and an exit sign here on the city's right-of-way in front of their new business on Second Street. The architectural review board reviewed this request at their May 26 meeting, and these are the proposed two signs, three signs that they are proposing to lo, to locate back on these locations. Staff therefore recommends approval of the proposed signs on the city right-of-way subject to the five conditions as recommended in my staff memorandum. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Applicants from Autobell and the sign company are here if you have any questions of them also.
Thank you, Carol. Questions, comments?
Ms. Murphy, is it correct that this is necessary because of the unusually wide right-of-way that the city maintains on Second Street and that if we, and we enabled this opportunity several years ago without which the signs would be, to be on the property would be unreasonably far removed from the curb?
That's correct. You can probably see right here the location of the previous car wash sign. This property is about 40 feet from the edge of the curb, and the right-of-way itself is about 140 feet in width. So that was the requirement we changed back in 2000 to allow council to allow this type of sign to be located out on the right-of-way in instances where the right-of-way is really wide like this. Thank you.
Mr. Tuttle pointed out on Monday that because the right-of-way is so wide, many businesses on Second Street actually maintain city properties, so we're getting a good deal here. Also, just like to point out that this is an example of continued investment in Second Street that's happened in the last year and a half that everyone should be really excited about.
Doug? Agree?
Yes.
Yeah, and we've done this for other businesses along there as well, so this, this seems to be.
We've allowed eight or more since we started this in 2000, and several of them on Second Street. It's been the Southern Border Restaurant, Second Street Bistro is another one on Second Street that's been allowed, and so we've done this location, some on Capital Lanning Road, and one on Richmond Road, and one on Parkway Drive for Parkway Apartments, so.
Good, well, well, we appreciate the applicant, and this is making the investment here. This is, Second Street's becoming a happening place in the city, and you're just part of this, so thank you very much for that. Let me come back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the council approve the location of the proposed signs on the city right-of-way subject to the five conditions recommended by staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frouting.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye. Okay. Next, city attorney reports. I believe we have nine?
None.
And let, let me just say, it's very nice to see Joe, city mayor, welcome again.
It's nice to be here.
Next agenda item is unfinished business, any, any unfinished business?
Last month, we, we talked about the tourism grant funding program and how to facilitate that program, and I asked for an additional month. And so I think we've had, all had some time to think about it, and one of the comments that I made last time was that one of the benefits of this program is, was how it engages city council in these investments, how it engages us in, into the community, into the business community with the, with the people that are, you know, who would request the money for a benefit to the city, and, and I don't want to lose that, and so, and I know that we have several time-sensitive requests, one being First Night, the other one was the Hotel Association, and there may be one or two more that, that I'm forgetting. And so I- And so I think what, what I'd like to see us do is, is to not hold back that process, you know, let's get these applications in. And I think for me, I'd like to see these applications coming to the executive, the economic development director in a simple form where, you know, who's requesting the money, how much money are they requesting, what is their desired outcome possibly, and how will it be spent? Let the, the economic development director have some conversation with that applicant, and then present it to city council, force, you know, individual evaluation, and then feedback to the exec, to the, to the economic development director. And I think through that process, council remains actively engaged, and rather than the decision being made with staff and consultates and with council, council makes the decision.
That's very close to what, what we had talked about previously, the idea being that we have a contact point in the city where those applications would come to, that there would be, would be a first-round discussion with council, is this, is there interest in proceeding with this or not? And then if so, if, if necessary, then to put together the, the staff work to really fill this out and, and make us aware of both all the intended and unintended consequences that might occur here. And I think most of council was ready to proceed with that. There was some objections, so the decision was made to, well, let's just wait until we can sort of refine the mechanism and get it in place. I don't have a problem with the mechanism that you're talking about. I think it's, it's essentially what, what we had talked about before. But I'll turn to other council members and see what their thoughts are.
I'm not as concerned about the structure of the process as long as we have the process. And we move it forward. I think the other two applicants, Mr. Tuttle, the Virginia Arts Festival for expanded programming for their tenth anniversary, and the Winter Blues Jazz Festival for marketing. Is there anybody else?
Those are the four.
And, you know, Winter Blues Jazz Festival is not that far away, and it's hard to think about winter today. So I'd be in favor, but do we put this in some kind of motion form? Does it come back to us as a memo? What, and how do we?
Yeah, Jack, is this, can this be a, a council policy that doesn't take, sort of, can be informal action or what?
If you want the, the vote on the appropriation effectively to come to you, then I just, just say it just that way. Just bring, we'll bring each one to you. I think under, under the council management form of government, it should come through the manager to you as opposed to a staff member. But other than that, it will, it will come to you. So next month, we could work on these, just as we were in the middle anyway. But rather than make the decision at the staff level in consultation, we bring them back to you at the council, and you can vote on them. If that's the council's preference, you can certainly do it that way.
And, and the manager could appoint a, a staff member to be the point person for receiving those.
Right, to do, to do the work and legwork because.
And there the economic development office might be the appropriate.
On several, there's no doubt about that, that I'm sure that Michelle's office would be the right one to work on several of these.
And just as with the other groups that we, the Parks Commission, Social Services Advisory Board, that make recommendations to us, these should come with a staff recommendation. Second.
It's uncomfortable with that, and, and I didn't mean to undermine the, the city manager's role, and that was an important nuance that I, that I didn't take into consideration. I apologize for that. So, so long as it's council making the decision and it's not staff making the decision.
And that, that's never been a question.
Well, that's what was said last, in the, in the, in the recommendation last month, it was staff made the recommendation in consultation with the city council.
I, I took it to be a recommendation to council for council.
Either way, I think we all agree.
I think we're on the right side.
Yeah, okay. We're agreed to that? Okay. We will put together a, a policy and.
And we, what I expect will happen is next month, the staff will come back with a number of recommendations for it.
Sure.
And, and how we approve those recommendations, I don't, you know, we have made some decisions in the past that did require a city council meeting and a vote. And I think what was pointed out to me is we have some time-sensitive applicants or, you know, request with us now, and so maybe we can expedite that process and have staff come back to council in that informal process and, and get a collective yea or nay, as we did with some of the other, with all of the other expenditures.
Wow. We will iterate towards something, but we, we need to have a policy that, that will work and be fair and, and transparent to everyone. So I think, I think that's the ultimate objective in, in this process.
And I think, I think as we move forward with a, with a funding formula that, that regenerates the two hundred and fifty thousand, I think then we really have to have a fairness kind of policy put together. But we have already acted in a certain way, and, and we've given money to the Harps Festival, you know, the Muscatorel and various other things.
Winter Blues Jazz, Winter Blues, yeah.
And so I think there, there is precedent already set. And again, I know, you know, there's two applicants in the audience that are interested and want to know pretty soon.
So now, I just want to make sure I'm seeing this. Are we, is it not coming back to council next month at the meeting? Is that what we're seeing?
Well, I don't, I, I think if we have some time-sensitive requests made, I think then those requests, we should vet those pretty quickly to continue in the tradition that we have. I don't know that there's something that we need to see next month unless we want to adopt a formal policy.
I'm just not sure where we left it. I mean, is it, is it just, are we going to review these next month? Are you saying they're more time-sensitive than that, so we need to make decisions more quickly?
I think so. But it, I know that the magazine, for example, has a paper time-sensitive issue. When the First Night folks were here, and I think I heard from, from somebody on council, maybe the mayor that, or maybe the city manager, that that required a decision to be made pretty soon. I think the assistant city managers.
On the first night, the last month we talked about this, I said that one we need to move ahead with because of their, we have moved ahead with that, and it has, it's been approved.
With the agreement of council.
With the agreement of council. So, and so that was done.
Right.
But, but we have three more that are out there, and that the, that the staff work, particularly with regard to the hotel motel proposal, needs to get active and get working on. And so what I hear you say when I'm taking this is, let's go ahead and do that, and then before we actually sign the letter and approve it, we bring it back for council's approval.
No, I think, I think we do, just like we did First Night.
Okay, fine.
And Harps Festival. Let's, let's get that decision done for any of those that are in the hopper and that are time-sensitive.
It's not just like First Night, because we talked about that at our last meeting. So you're saying we need to move more quickly on this, and staff should put something together and then come back to us individually in the meantime?
Yes, individually, okay.
The, the problem with the map is, we saw the first iteration of the map. There were some questions about it, and I've never seen a second iteration.
Well, that, that's why I think we need to give staff the time to.
Yeah.
Put something together and come back to us, because I think some of us have some, some concerns that need to be discussed about that.
Right.
So let's, let staff work and, and come back and see, see what the, the decision is.
Perfect.
And, and I still think we ought to have ongoing discussions on refilling that cup of.
Total, and I, I think there was, I, I came away from our previous discussion understanding that, that that was an agreement among council, that that was an extremely valuable tool for the city to have, and we want to make sure in future budgets that that stays there.
To, to the degree that we're.
Yeah, right, yeah. Well, that, that applies to every aspect.
We know we cannot encompass future times.
You got it. Okay. Is, is that helpful?
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. New business, appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. Mayor, I move that effective July first, two thousand and fifteen, city council appoint Mark Castro to the architectural review board to fill the unexpired term of Andrew Edwards that will expire December thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen, and Robert Willey to the economic development authority for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand and nineteen, and Reginald Davis to the social services advisory board to fill the unexpired term of Estherine Moeller that will expire June thirty, two thousand and sixteen. And also effective July one, two thousand and fifteen, I move that city council reappoint James Ramage to the social services advisory board for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Motion, a second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Ms. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Potts.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland. Aye.
Mr. Potts. Stephen. That brings us to our final agenda item today, which is open forum. This is a time when anyone who wishes to address council on any matter may do so. If you want to address council, please come forward and state your name and address. I have a number of speakers' cards, and I'll have those, the first is Gary Shelley. Welcome, Mr. Shelley.
Thank you very much. I am Gary Shelley, two or five minutes through. Couple things on my mind here this month. First of all, I would like to thank the council for allowing me to speak in excess of the three-minute limit at last month's meeting. I urge you to increase the limit to five minutes. The public should be encouraged to speak and participate, and three-minute limit can severely hinder a speaker's ability to thoroughly get his message across. Over the course of the past year, I've spoken and supported citizens who had concerns about the city's intrusions onto their properties. I most recently spoke to Mr. and Mrs. Chris Iverson this past Sunday night, and they reported to me at that time that they have once again had no response whatsoever from you, Mr. Mayor. So be it. My appearances on their behalf have taken the focus off of an issue that I've spoken about many times in the past, the city's decision to finance the Williamsburg redevelopment housing authority acquisition of one-ten Harrison Avenue. You never responded to these concerns either. To review, there were many red flags surrounding the disastrous transaction. Most disturbing of all was the revelation that there had been an existing contract on the property, and I have made a very serious charge that the council's liaison to the WRHA did not make this critical information public, a blatant violation of the public trust. Mayor, you were that council liaison, and I've called for your resignation. Mr. Tuttle and I have agreed to meet next Friday to discuss the issue. Mr. Tuttle has at his disposal all documents and records related to the approval of the purchase. If Mr. Tuttle is able to produce the documentation disproving my very serious allegations against you, then I will appear here next month, I will look you in the eye, and I will apologize for the attacks that I've made upon your character. I want to thank Mr. Tuttle for agreeing to meet with me. As you well know, I've been an outspoken critic of our local government on several issues, most notably involving student issues, such as voting rights, and citizens who have endured multiple unwarranted, unwarranted intrusions onto their properties by city personnel. I have called out city officials, including you, who did not respond to these concerns. These incidents have left bitter feelings, not only for me, but for those whose lives have been disrupted by these outrages. We can only hope that the new city manager will be responsive to citizen concerns and take responsibility for the states are made. Nonetheless, we all wish Mr. Tuttle health, happiness, and success in whatever adventures he might undertake against his new phase in his life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker's card I have is Roy Snyder. Roy, welcome.
My name is Roy Snyder, and I reside in James City County. I'm here today to talk about my two favorite Williamsburg topics, Jack Tuttle and Waller Mill Park. I want to personally thank Jack for his many, many years of service to the broader community. His involvement in such programs as what was called the Leadership Historic Triangle have had long-term impacts on the development of the entire area. We have been fortunate to have had such a good man in our midst for these many years. Jack has also given significant attention to the long-term development of Waller Mill Park. The removal of a water-side shack with an electric fan for cooling in the summer and a mobile heating unit for use in the winter to be replaced by a modern office building with real plumbing was a huge step forward in the park's development. Creating a dock park addressed a need that reached far beyond the old view of what the park should be. Finally, the institution of an entrance fee brilliantly forced the majority of us non-Williamsburg residents to help pay for the park costs. I'm probably the oldest, both in age and length of usage, boater's fisherman at Waller Mill Park. It was my pleasure to introduce Jack to boat fishing on the lake. I think he was sufficiently inoculated in such a way that he will continue to use the park in his retirement. Which brings me to the final chapter in Jack's link to Waller Mill Park. On your agenda today, you issued a contract to fully update the entire boating area. I support this decision. The docks are showing their aging signs. Some areas have begun to present possible danger to users. Having a modern boat service area will increase use, bringing in even more income into the budget. It will also beautify the entire lakefront area. If I had any concern about this contract, it would be the start date. I would hope that the start date for construction would occur at the end of the summer, allowing we boat users to have full access during the good days. This would also allow for the park to maximize its entrance income during its peak period. Thank you, Jack, and thank you, city of Williamsburg.
Thank you, Roy. Next speaker's card is Gene Zidler, former mayor. Welcome, Gene.
Thank you. Mayor Holman, Vice Mayor Fryland, members of city council, good afternoon. I'm Gene Zidler. I live at one forty-eight Mimosa Drive in the city, and I'm here today to say thank you to Jack Tuttle for his twenty-four years of truly exemplary service to our city. When Jack arrived in nineteen ninety-one, I was in my first year as a member of the Williamsburg School Board, and I got to know him in that capacity. In nineteen ninety-four, I left the school board for a seat on city council, which I held until stepping aside in two thousand and ten. I mention this because with the exception of several unnamed long-tenured city staff members, I have had the opportunity to serve the public alongside Jack for more years than anyone else that I can think of, nineteen years totally and sixteen on city council. So I want to add my voice to those who are expressing appreciation to him today. In nineteen ninety-one, this community was different than it is today. Jack oversaw many improvements that now most of us take for granted. For example, the multiple projects to bury power lines underground. I mean, at this point, it's even hard to imagine what Jamestown Road looked like before this work was done there, and that just names one project. Or the Prince George Streets, Streetscape project, which added outdoor eating opportunities, enabling a more vibrant business activity and social interaction there. We have two parking garages, a community building, an expanded public library, the Strawberry Plains neighborhood, an award-winning farmers market, a municipal building that supports more efficient service delivery, and a real emergency operations center. Green space was acquired and parks added, notably a hundred acres purchased to remain undeveloped in Holly Hills, and the creation of Reed Oak Park on Quarter Path Road. And during this twenty-four-year period, our neighbors and partners, James City and York Counties, have also grown and seen changes that impacted the city and the entire region. Jack has been masterful in working with the elected leadership, city staff, our citizens and neighbors to navigate successfully through these changes that I mentioned and many more. He did it by bringing to bear his extensive knowledge and expertise on the many facets of local government, especially strong financial management in both good times and challenging times. He did it by using good judgment and good timing in bringing forward issues to be resolved. He did it by focusing on the most pressing community problems while at the same time thinking strategically and creatively for the long term and helping the council set policy and goals. He did it by communicating relevant information clearly and concisely, thereby facilitating good council decisions and keeping citizens informed. And he did it by exercising. And he did it by exercising strong but positive leadership that motivated staff and brought results. Important to Jack's success is that he understands the region in which he lived. He knows that the city, the college, and Colonial Williamsburg must engage with each other for positive good, and he knows that one locality cannot succeed on its own but needs to work in partnership with others. His strategic thinking, creative problem-solving, and collaborative working style have earned him tremendous respect, not only in this community but throughout Hampton Roads. Jack has been a manager whose good work has instilled widespread confidence and trust. In 1991, the city council was lucky enough to find someone who loves history and really appreciates all that we have here. And that council was wise enough to select someone who was not looking to use his position as a stepping stone to another job, but instead was looking for the right place to establish roots, raise a family, and commit to the community. We have been very fortunate to benefit from his work for the last 24 years and are just as fortunate that he and Susan will remain in our community to continue to make this and ever better place to live, work, and visit. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Gene. Final speaker's card I have today is Bobby Braxton. Bobby, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of city council. My name is Robert A. Bobby Braxton, and I reside 5.3 miles away from Tuttle Trail. I would like to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge and thank Jack Tuttle for his service to the citizens of Williamsburg. I've had the pleasure of knowing Jack for 11 years and have worked with him as a member of city council and as a citizen advocate. Jack is dedicated, an ethical public servant, who truly cares about this historic city and its citizens. One project that stands out to me and is near and dear to my heart is the Braxton Court Community Development Block Grant Project, which was completed in 2007. Under Jack's leadership, city and Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority revitalized the Braxton Court neighborhood by eliminating blight, enhancing business and housing opportunities, and preserving the historic single-family character of the neighborhood. This project took vision and determination, both of which are Jack's strengths. With sincere gratitude, thank you for your service to the city of Williamsburg. We are a better city because of your leadership over the past 24 years, and I hope your retirement is filled with good health and blessing. Retirement is great, trust me and I.
Thank you, Robert.
Unusual, I hope you don't.
You have ultimate. Bobby always was a rule breaker, so. Anybody else wish to address city council?
Ron, welcome.
Ron Curtin of the WHMA, Mayor Hallman, members of council. At the May council meeting, when you passed the ordinance without really knowing how the final language would look, our members were skeptical. When the announcement went out recently to our members included the final language, we went from skeptical to extremely concerned. However, during that time, we assured our members that we were having good faith discussions with members of council. We conveyed that this council is a thoughtful group of people that listen, deliberate, and then make informed, reasoned decisions. And Councilman Pond is right, when you were talking about the amendment earlier, the heads from my group were nodding in agreement. So I want to thank you for all your hard work and consideration related to the length of zoning amendment. I think you're taking steps in the right direction, and during this transition period, we look forward to working with you and doing our part to help in any way that we can. So thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Does anybody else wish to address council on any matter?
May I just say one thing? I agree with one of Mr. Shelley's points, and that is that we ought to think about the five-minute limit on open forum. We really don't have that many people who speak, and I think if it helps people deliver a more complete message, then I think we should consider that.
And we certainly discussed that. We decided we'd go with the three minutes for a while, see how it worked, and I have no objection to that, so maybe at the next, or we could make the decision.
We won't be here.
Other council members to decide.
I would recommend that we decide in.
Is that consensus? That's a consensus, so I'll ask staff to go ahead and make that change in our policy. Anybody else wish to address council?
I might say, since your, that policy is adopted by motion of the city council, I think it probably would be a motion, and then we can change the policy and it'll be official.
Okay, so if.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjust the open forum time limit from three minutes to five minutes.
Second. I have a motion and second. Call the roll, please, Jerry.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, so Jack, if you will make those changes, we appreciate it. With that, I think we're finished with our business for the day, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move for adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Evening adjourn. Thank you all very much.